Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the July 17, 2013 City Council Meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order that July 17, 2013, regular City Council meeting in Satellite Beach approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Breimer in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please join me in the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standers, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to citizens' comments, I'd like to read this into record. Due to the death of our immediate family, Councilwoman Gott is attending tonight's council meeting via Skype. So, if you would, when you're here, if you would please speak clearly into the mic so she can hear us. Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments for Non-Agenda Items. The floor is open.
Good evening, everyone. David Ammar, resident. I've got a statement to read and then I'd like it placed in the public record. During the council comment portion of the June 19, 2013 meeting, a member presented to the council and the public a document to be placed in the public record as proof the ethics complaint against former Vice Mayor Rhodes had been dismissed. That statement was false and misleading. The document presented had absolutely nothing to do with the ethics complaint against former Vice Mayor Rhodes. The true outcome of any ethics complaint will come from Tallahassee, based on its merits, and not from any local group or council member. City council members must present accurate information that has been thoroughly read and researched before presentation to the council and public. To not do so shows nonfeasance and negligence to your responsibilities as a sitting City Council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further citizens' comments? Floor is open for non-agenda items. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Open it up for City Council comments. Who would like to start?
I'll start. And I did, I'd like to actually correct the record. I noticed in the minutes that I was the one that made the statement regarding former Councilman Rhodes. I meant to say former Councilman French. So, with that, I'll correct the record. It was brought to my attention immediately, and that's all I want to say. When it comes up in the minutes, I'm not going to correct the minutes because that's what I did say, but I did make a mistake.
Any further comments?
The only comment I have is our Sampson's Island meeting was canceled due to rain, where they had planned to go out on the island and just kind of do a tour of the island, that sort of thing. But that will be, I think, rescheduled for the next meeting. Is that not right, Carrie?
July 30.
July 30. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and Sheriff Wayne Ivey was the guest speaker at the meeting. And I have to tell you, the Sheriff's Department is doing some incredible things. They've instituted a bunch of new different programs that they're working on. They've basically lowered the cost of operations in the Sheriff's Department with some of the programs they're working with. I was really just in awe of some of the things they're actually doing and getting done with less dollars, especially our taxpayer dollars. So, you know, Wayne is doing an excellent job, and I commend him for the team that he has put together that's working on our behalf as not only Satellite Beach residents, but as Brevard County residents. Also, I attended the REC Board meeting as the liaison, and as you can see, there's a bike hidden in the room over here, and that's one of the things that's going to be on our agenda as we move down with some of the recommendations that are going to be coming from the REC Board. This afternoon, along with the police chief, we attended the Reland Management Ribbon Cutting, which is, they're a group that oversees associations for either condominiums, apartments. It's a management group. They've located in Satellite Beach. It's one of 11 offices that they have in the state. And David Furlough, the COO, was there, and we got to talk with him for a little while. And they're looking at a lot of opportunities here in Satellite Beach and in Brevard County. So, we welcome them. That's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting. And during this time, I want to, Courtney, can we arrange a meeting with schools starting here with the principals at some point coming up? I think it'd be good for us to make contact. Chief, thank you. That's all I have. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
Okay. Moving on, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Yes, we have, I did want to welcome the Surfing Turtle Ice Cream Shop, which is a new business we have at 1210 Highway 81A. They are now open, and they are celebrating National Ice Cream Month until the end of the month. Harold and Barbara Brackett, so we welcomed them to our community. We also thank them for their beautiful renovation. If anybody's driven by there, it looks very nice, so. Leela Management, also another new business into our community. Small World, that management company manages my dad's condo, and he was there. We have our new ladder truck at the fire station, which is very exciting. We've gotten a lot of attention, also a lot of rumors, because there's now a new rumor going around that we paid $960,000 for that fire station, or for that ladder truck, which is not true. We received that ladder truck through a partnership with Brevard County. That partnership was developed by our own fire chief, and Brevard County's fire chief, and so that fire, that ladder truck comes to us at no additional cost to the city. We do have a special meeting on the 31st. This is the, the purpose of that meeting is to present the proposed budget to City Council and to the community, and we will be setting the tentative millage rate at that meeting. We will be reserving some hours at the skate park for BMX use, and we have some of our BMXers. We'll be basically instituting this primarily in the hours where the skaters use this facility the least. Mr. Dave Brumlow is here to, he introduced his organization, Florida BMX Skate Park Series, and this organization provides events throughout the state at skate parks for BMX users. And so I'd like to invite him up to the podium to just kind of give an overview of what they're doing.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you guys for opening the park up to BMX. And like she said, we do run a six-stop skate park series, just five or six different skate parks, depending on the season, just throughout the state of Florida. So, that's pretty much it, just the parks open up to BMX. So, do you have any questions at all, or has some damage been an issue in the past?
Yeah, I do. I'm a, I'm a, I love BMX, and I'll have two boys that skate. We are a little, well, they are. The kids have come to me, and they do express concerns about the pegs, you know, the pegs on bikes. It causes some damage to the concrete and put nicks in it, and then it becomes an issue for years.
Well, the park's pretty old, so when the park was made, bikes were about 40 pounds. Now they're, you know, about 25 pounds, and everybody uses these plastic pedals, and the sleeves that go over the pegs now. And the plastic, and Orlando parks haven't had any problems, Jupiter, the West Coast, so it's just damages next to nothing now.
Okay.
Another question. When you guys use it, if you would do us a favor and give us some input on, you know, upgrades for the future?
Yeah.
We'd like to see, we'd like to have our facilities used. That's why we built them.
Yep.
And, you know, any input you can give us would greatly be appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, they can give a carrier, you know, whoever you guys want. And like she said in the notes, you know, the 11th, you know, our online store, we're going to host just a big welcome event there, so we'll get that out through all the kids that we have in our network, too, to hopefully get a good turnout for it.
And we'll, we'll put that on our Facebook page, too, and try to get the message out.
And we actually, I have our web guy. He's actually making a flyer for it right now, so just whenever, you know, we can get the time and everything from Carrie, and we can finish it up and get that flyer to you guys, too.
Great.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Carrie's my neighbor.
We do have some of the younger BMXers here tonight, and I suggested that they come and introduce themselves. We did this one, we had skaters coming in, so just say who you are. I think that's a good idea, maybe what school you're going to.
Let's go. It's not that hard.
Actually, first, we got Andy Garcia. He's a top amateur. He won the Gatorade Free Flow Series a few years ago. So, you know, he actually stands in at Harvard College. And then we have Andrew.
We won't hold that against him. That's okay.
We have Andrew here. He's just a longtime BMXer. He also worked with us on the series with scorekeeping and, you know, whatever else we need. And then Darian, he's also a rider. You know, he's been following the circuit for a little bit. And then Joel, he's the second overall for the 13 and 15, so he's actually getting pretty good, too. And then his brother, he's been the chauffeur. So, let's say we're pretty much, you know, the crew. There's quite a few more guys, but a lot more younger or just working and whatnot, just so they can make it tonight.
Great. Well, thank you all.
Thank you very much for coming.
And before I let you go, I'm going to give you a quick update. I was asked to give an update on the issue with the clerk of court. We initially sent a letter to them. We received one back, and then our attorneys just sent out another one. Basically, we're going back and forth on their authority and questioning things like that regarding the audit process. So, when we get a response back, we'll let you know. And then the agreement with the county, the, they, I just spoke with the administration today, and they have their tentative millage rate is going on the July 23 meeting, so I agreed to set that agreement back to August 7. So, okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the issue with the clerk, should, who's, who should be communicating with clerk officials from our city?
Staff would prefer, if it was just us, myself and the city attorney, and then our CRA attorney. So, if council could refrain from speaking with them, I would appreciate that. And then, and basically in general, about the issue.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need a motion or anything on that, or how do we want to?
If you could do a motion, that would be great. Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that staff be, Courtney, be the individuals handling this issue on behalf of the city, and that the council should be not involved other than by information coming from staff or the two attorneys.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any discussion from the council?
I'm a little confused, so you're saying you can't talk to the clerk of the court?
I can't hear you.
I just, I'm a little confused. So, you're saying you're, this council's making a motion to prohibit anyone from discussing any, this issue with the clerk of the court?
Yes, other than staff.
What they're saying now is that since it is now being handled by the attorneys for both sides.
Well, then, the only thing I would ask, because I'm hearing rumors about all these letters that are going back and forth, I haven't seen those letters, and I'd be like, I would like to be copied on all correspondence that's going back and forth to the clerk of court.
We concur to you. We would appreciate their counsel to not share that with anyone else.
Without anyone else, it's confidential. It's confidential information from the city.
Excuse me. It's not open floor. Thank you.
I mean, I think, I think it should be shared with us, but I don't think we should be sharing it with anybody else. We should know what's going on, and we should be aware of what's happening, but we shouldn't be sharing it with anybody. It's, it's a pending lawsuit, possibly.
I, I'll be glad to make sure that when we send the information to you, that we let you know whether or not you can share it.
So, I just want to make sure, because again, they're, I'm sorry. I can't hear when I turn your head. You can give me a look.
No problem.
What if someone comes in and requests the public record, and they share it with someone?
But that's what I'm saying. I'll let you know whether or not it's under confidentiality.
Because, you know, I asked Courtney to bring this forward, and it appears that this information is quickly coming out of City Hall and being put on the Internet.
Or, it's not coming out of City Hall.
Well, wherever, wherever it's coming from, but it's quickly being posted out on the Internet.
Coming out of the city hall's office, yeah. It's not coming out of City Hall.
Jim, you'll let us know which items need to stay confidential and which are for public records. Thank you. We just need to make sure we keep it straight, and the items that can be for public records needs to be out there. Okay? Okay? Councilwoman Gott, comment?
I need to have the motion repeated. I couldn't hear it. And I will make a comment. You know, I've attended by phone and now by Skype. Skype is only slightly better than by phone. All of you sound like you are talking at the bottom of the sea. Your voices are very garbled, and in the budget, we really need to address this technology for our meetings. So, if I could hear the motion, please.
Lenar?
The motion was basically to direct the city manager and the attorneys to do the correspondence with the clerk of court and for other council members to not correspond with the clerk of court at this time, as it could be a potential law issue.
Okay, and so my question would be not to communicate just with the clerk of court or with anyone while this is a pending matter. The motion should be, hi, Andy. The motion should be that we shouldn't be discussing this with anybody, not just with the clerk's office. This is a pending legal matter.
Do I have an amendment of the motion?
I'll amend the motion. I think you make it inclusive is, yeah, is a good idea, so I'll second that, yeah. I'm in my second.
Okay. I have amendment by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Well, I'm going to, this is where I kind of have to draw the line. I think this is a former's internship, and unless this information is deemed by the attorney to be proprietary, I mean, I don't, I think, I'm kind of duty-bound. If a citizen asks me a question, to ask that, that's, that's why we were elected by support that amended motion.
I believe what Jim said is the information that can be let out, he will be the one to determine what is public record and what needs to be confidential.
No, I understand that, but to say that we can't discuss, discuss, the motion then needs to be massaged differently so that it's, if people come to you and ask you a question, you're duty-bound to answer that question, as long as it's not proprietary information.
And that's what we said in this.
Mm-hmm. That's what the motion says.
Well, I want to make sure it's clear.
Yes. Jim, that's your taking of it, that you will tell us the, excuse me, proprietary information that we should not allow out at this time, correct? Okay. Okay. Any further council comments?
No.
Here are none. Lenar?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mark Deacon?
Yes. Motion passes. Courtney, any further?
No, that's the only answer.
Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Seven, Discuss Take Action on Presentation of Donations for Fire Department Medical.
This happened again. And a couple weeks ago, we did a presentation where we had the Satellite Beach Women's Club and those who were supporting their cause to make a donation to the Fire Department's ALS Trust Fund for the purchase of equipment, and we would absolutely remiss if we didn't also recognize some other community members of the city that have also done very similar things for us in the very recent months here. So, if I'd like to take an opportunity, as much as she hates to do this, if I can ask Lynn Kavanaugh to come up, please, and Warren Green, if you'll come up here, and Steve Bradley, if you can come up representing Beachside Grill, and Warren's representing the patrons of Beachside Grill, and let me kind of just give a silent partner in the city's operations. She's, she is so much involved in things that we do, and, and the way that she's involved is in continuous support. She's made donations to the police department. She's made donations to the fire department over the years. The things that we've been able to do is buy automatic external defibrillators to put in our, in our libraries and things of that nature. And then also, we've got business community that has supported us greatly also, and Beachside Grill and Warren Green. Let me tell you the story about, about these two cats here, because Mr. Green, two years ago, came to us, and he says he hosts and does something on, on the Kentucky Derby, and it's Derby Hat Day, and then they do a lottery raffle type of thing, and the proceeds have been coming to the fire department for the ALS Trust Fund. And Beachside Grill's been, been the business that has supported that also, and it's just been, you go there for Hat Day, that is really cool stuff. People got some cool hats, better than what I got, you know? So, here's what I'd like to do. I just, once again, I do a presentation for, for these individuals here, and both of them, I'm going to be presenting them with a plaque here, and I'll just read it here in general here. It says, "This letter serves as official recognition for your service that you provide to the citizens of Satellite Beach through unwavering support, dedication, and contribution to the Satellite Beach Fire and Paramedic Services. Your contributions to our Advanced Life Support Trust Fund will enable the department to purchase life-saving equipment." And it goes on to say is that this equipment be used and continued the care that we provide to our citizens. So, Ms. Kavanaugh, and, and for photo op moment here, she's presenting me a cardboard check. I tried, I tried to take it to the bank, and they didn't like that. And if you do, Steve and Warren, if you'll come up here, and I'd like to present this to you, and Steve, for you guys, for y'all to put it at the restaurant there, and we'll turn around, and we'll do a big picture here for a second. Oh, get in front of the camera. Oh, we're talking for now. So, we're going to have to hold this up here a little bit to this side.
It's going to have to go back over now.
Yeah. A little bit better. And let me just say this, is that what it says?
This is going to go on the rest of.
Oh, good. I like a French toast. Dollar donation, and this last Kentucky Derby Day Hat Day, they did, is that Warren Green and the restaurant raised $351.57, and that was almost the exact amount of money that was done the year before, and both, all those contributions went to the ALS Trust Fund. So, again, thank you very much for what you guys have done.
And on behalf of the council, thank you very much for your support of this city. Thank you. Any comments in the survey? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Discuss Contract for Healthcare Consulting Services. Courtney?
Thank you. Staff is requesting, staff is requesting to approve the agreement to provide agent of record services relating to employee benefits from the Garing Group Incorporated. Staff discussed this with you at the budget workshop regarding our healthcare and our desire to rebid the healthcare out, and we, our desire also to engage a consultant to do that. We did look into the city of Cocoa request for proposal process that was done just last year, was done very recently. They submitted, or their RFP process was very similar to one that we would have used, and we reviewed that process as well as their contract, and feel that piggybacking off their contract would be appropriate for us to do. Therefore, we are recommending approval for that contract. Garing Group will consult, recommend, and provide guidance to the most advantageous course of action concerning negotiations of insurance markets that will realize a long-term savings to the city. Garing Group Incorporated will ensure cities' compliance with the Affordable Care Act, which is another concern of staff. They are here this evening, if you have any questions from them, Ms. Nina and Ms. Anna Marie, right? So, they are here if you have any questions. And staff is requesting approval of this contract so we can move forward with putting out that proposal in time for next, next year's budget.
Thank you. Council comments?
I had a chance to talk with Courtney after the last council meeting about this, and I think this is an excellent idea. We need to really look at these costs. They've been continuing to increase each and every year. Some of it's legit, it's, you know, just based on healthcare in general, but I think this is a great idea to take a look at this and see, see what we can provide for the same or less money.
And just a question, I assume, because we just got the budget tonight, that the money is budgeted next?
Uh, yes, it is.
I spoke with Courtney about this yesterday, and I showed the same sentiment that Mark already alluded to. You know, these are costs that have been going up, you know, continually, year after year, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at what we have and see if there's better things out there.
Courtney, will there also be in this service provided a projection of approximate cost for a X number of periods, years out?
That, that's hard to do, because a lot of your insurance adjustments or rate changes are based on your claims. Unfortunately, this year, I don't believe that the increase we're getting this year is solely based on the claims. So, it, that's hard to say. But this consultant can create our wellness program for us, help us look at more creative solutions for a long term, and not only rebidding our healthcare next year, but also looking for a long-term solution. You know, I just got off the phone with Mark Ryan in Titusville. Their, their costs are going down this year because of their health clinic. So, those are some of the creative solutions out there that we need to check into and look into trying to do, and this consultant can help us do that. They have a level of expertise that the staff, we just don't have, so we definitely need someone of their caliber to help us go through this, to get our costs not only down for next year, but for a long time.
This is going to be an ongoing issue, so we need to make sure we're at the best rate. Provide agent of record services relating to employee benefits. I have a, thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Before we vote, I'd like to open this Agenda Item Number Eight for public comment.
Good evening, council. Dale Abrams, a resident. Welcome to our community. I spent some time on your website. Very impressed. What exactly is going to be the cost to have these folks come in and do what they're going to do? And what about taking over the HR department? Because they have the capable of, capable.
Benefits coordinator right now. Her job is completely different than what this consultant is doing.
What is her job? What is she doing currently right now?
She does all the intake for new employees. She does all the pension-related items. She does all the workers' comp. I mean, and I can go on and on, but she does the things that are local to the city for the specific employee services. The Garing Group is going to be negotiating with outside agencies, which is a different, it's a different animal. I'm not real sure why that justification was done when they hired the HR person that, you know, the consultant was the wash, but it's, it's just different. I think the last consultant we had was just not, you know, the caliber that the Garing Group is.
Well, from what I read about this company on the Internet, they've actually done some work for the city of Clearwater, they've done some work for Vero Beach, and they have got, they're the full monty. I mean, they've got a wellness program, they've got, you know, full benefits program. They can, actually, you could outsource your HR department, which is something that we talked about in 2011, and there was a little reluctance to that. So, these folks, you know, have, they, they offer a lot of services, which is something that maybe we ought to look at going forward. And then the other question I have is, what healthcare plans are they going to be offering?
Well, they don't offer the plans. They're a consultant, and they go out and bid out the healthcare.
Okay, so is it going to be Health First? Is it going to be Aetna? Is it going to be United Healthcare?
Whoever responds to the RFP. So, usually, it's, you know, their Cigna, it's your Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, Aetna, all of those.
So, they do the RFP for the health insurance companies.
And negotiate.
And then they negotiate, and then they just go through all of it.
Yes.
And present to you as far as this is a better one than that one.
Correct.
Okay, well, I would suggest that the employees of the city of Satellite Beach start becoming a little more aware of health insurance plans, and, you know, Obamacare is coming. We don't know what it's going to look like, but, you know, hopefully this will work out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this Agenda item? Here are none. Back to council.
I just have a question. When was the last time we had a consultant look at our health program?
We apparently had a consultant, I guess, the year before last, for a long time, whose rates were very similar to this consultant's rate. But instead of bidding out, there was like a price quote that was done on the current plan. So, it's a different, it was a different thing they did, and I'm not real sure the staff was very happy about what they got out of that consultant. In this case, it's a different scope. We have a much broader scope. The services are richer, and they, I believe the expertise is a lot different, higher.
Councilwoman Gott, any comment on this Agenda item?
No, I just want to make sure that I understand the motion. It was a motion to approve that agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further comment from council? Here are none, Lenore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes five nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Discuss Take Action on the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's Contract for Lory Lane Drainage. Allen?
Before you tonight is the contract for the Lory Lane Drainage Basin Drainage Improvement, and we've worked on this for a little while. David King is here to answer any questions. This drainage improvement will address not only drainage issues in the Hamlin, Kail, Sherwood area, but also Temple. And the reason why it's such a difficult situation is because it's an older trunk line that runs between the houses in the backyard of the houses on Hamlin and Sherwood, and it's very difficult, or Glenwood, I'm sorry, and it's very difficult to get to the system to do any work on it. So the 319 was available to not only fix these issues, but also to upgrade and treat the storm water in a new innovative way that FDEP is very excited about. David King is here, he can explain the technical aspect of it. I could explain it to you, but I couldn't get into the real nuts and bolts of it in a legible way, I guess. But anyway, as we go forward in the TNDL process, we're going to have to continue to come up with innovative ways to treat storm water, to make it effective, to come into compliance with the demands that have been put on us by the state. This is one way that we've found through, University of Florida has done some studies with what they call denitrification. It's a material, basically sawdust, that's put around pipes in the base of ponds to filter storm water before it gets into the groundwater and before it gets into the conveyance system to basically clean the nitrogen out of the water. We address phosphorus in a different way with cartridges in the inlet boxes. That's all addressed in this project. And once we get to 60% plans and permitting, we can also go out for a TNDL grant, which would also help us pay for our match. So that's a, because of this innovative approach, I think we probably have a pretty good chance of getting that grant. So if you have any questions, David's here to answer anything you have.
Allen, real quick. This will put us in compliance for the next phase of state regulations?
This will put us closer to being in compliance. The next phase of the TNDL, we are ahead of the game right now. This will get us closer to meeting our goal for the next five-year iteration. It won't get us all the way there, but it will address a lot of the issues that we have. So this is an ongoing process, and it's, there's no hard and fast answer. We can give you an amount of pounds of removal, and it gets us closer to our goal, as I said, but to say hard and fast that this is going to get us there for the next five years, I can't say that, and I wouldn't say that, because there's other things that we really need to do.
Thank you very much. Comments?
Yeah, David, the denitrification process with the sawdust and the filters that go in for the phosphates, can you tell us, I mean, this is new technology. Is it being, is it used, are we like, in the first places using it? How often does, I mean, does the sawdust need to be changed? How often do the filters and the baffle boxes need to be changed?
Yes, David King with Quinton Hampton Associates. Basically, what we're seeing on stormwater side is what's happened, what happened on the racewater side in the eighties, you know? We're going to treat the nutrients now. So basically, the wood particles, or it's an engineered backfill, basically, and it's going to have a few things, it's going to have some clay in it, some other things. There's a few different companies out there producing this product, and of course, they're saying, each one's saying theirs is better than the other ones. But basically, it's given a structure for the bugs, if you will, for the bacteria to eat off that nitrogen. And the same thing with the phosphorus and other type of filter. So is it new? No, because it's been the same type, but now it's just being applied to storm water. It is kind of on the, you know, new side, if you will, because, you know, from beginning of stormwater in the early eighties, when the water management district started regulating stormwater, it was more quantity-based, and then it started becoming quality-based. And actually, the refinement of this project actually came out because of, through FDP's BBAT process, when they were looking at all the cities and the counties' stormwater pipes, they failed to realize that the groundwater itself, which is constantly seeping into the waterways, have a huge amount of nitrogen and phosphorus, and they're saying, okay, what do we do with that? So it started out as exfiltration project, we're going to take that stormwater, send it into the soil without any special treatment. Well, then that groundwater finds its way to the river anyway. So they're saying, hey, let's treat it before it gets into the soil, before it gets into the groundwater, and therefore, we have it treated instead of short-circuiting it, if you will, to the groundwater. So it's new in the way of not a lot of people view it in stormwater because it is costly, and until the regulators say you have to do it, nobody's going to do it, but we're in that phase now.
Well, this is a great opportunity for us to be doing it, especially if, you know, there's a grant available that's going to help us offset some of the cost down the road when we get to that point, so. There was one question I had, and I don't know if Courtney, is that, did we figure out if it was 59.4 acres or 54.94 acres?
It's the 59. I went back to the application. I tried to call Tallahassee, but Amanda Peck, who I've been working with for the grant, she was out of the office today, but I went back and looked at the grant application itself, and it's 59.94 acres. And just to add, just one thing under what David was saying about the expense of the project, actually, FDEP is so excited about this project that they're eating the extra cost of the project. So where our share is going only 40%, we've taken it down to 34% for this project because they want to see it happen.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
No. David, just a couple of real light questions here. Why does it take 18 months before this project should get started? That's number one. And the second one was, how long will it take to complete the project once it gets going?
Actually, it was per plan to basically stretch it out more for what Allen was stating, was once we get into designing, reach that 60% design phase, we can reach, we can apply for TNDL grants. In the past, I think it started last year, they did start allowing, which is more federal money, they would not allow the federal money to be used with the state money. As of last year, last cycle, two cycles ago, they started allowing that, and that way we can leverage the city's money that more, so the city's share from 34% will go even less. I think it's a 50/50 at that point?
I think so, yes.
It's 50/50, so, 17%. So that's by design, and the other part of it is, you still have an outlay, and as in previous 319 projects, we usually go in saying we're going to take the full minimum or maximum required timeframe, and that gives you some leeway in case you don't have your matching money in place. We can always expedite it.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question for Courtney. This stormwater utility funding, we just got the budget, what's the revenue that's expected to come in? And so this, the budgetary impact is 352?
Well, that's the revenue that we're receiving. Is that what you asked?
Okay, are we proposing any increase in the stormwater assessment to cover costs? Just checking.
Further, council? No comments? Thank you. At this time, it opened up for Agenda Number Nine for public comments. Here are none, bringing back to council. Council?
Make a motion to approve the contract for Lory Lane Drainage Basin Improvements Phase One, 319H, to include the design, permitting, and bid preparation efforts by Quinton Hampton Associates, which will be funded as part of the city's cost share match.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm curious what 319H means. I sort of, John and I sort of wrote this grant, and I've never heard of 319H.
Well, go ahead, David, because I've always, there've always been 319Hs.
Yeah, and this is an educated guess, but I believe it's a reference to a certain rule in EPA's and DEP's funding guidelines. It's a section of that, a rule that this funding's founded.
Well, I would suggest that since that's not even mentioned in the contract, that motion just stop with Phase One, and you don't need that 319H parenthetical in there. And also, in the first paragraph of the contract itself, you might want to put the correct address for the city.
Thank you.
Good question on that, then. On the 319, how are we, what do we really, what do we need to have in there for your, you know, do we need to leave the H in, or what does that make a difference, one way or the other?
I don't know that you need to, I mean, the motion to me could, I mean, unless there's some requirements in the grant or required by the state, you could move to approve DEP Agreement Number G0357 presented to council for approval this evening, of all of the attachments. I'll amend my motion to that.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
And what is the motion?
Just to approve DEP Agreement Numbers G0357 between DEP and the city, as provided in council's packet this evening, with each of the attachments.
That's also going to include the change of address in there.
Correct.
Further discussion? Here are no further comments from council? Lenore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor of Barham?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes five nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten, Resolution 934 on Recreation Fees. Jim, will you read by title, please?
Resolution Number 934, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing policies, procedures, and fee schedules for use of Satellite Beach facilities, repealing Resolutions Number 543, 559, 572, 698, 725, 744, 749, 756, 786, 843, 862, 873, 915, 924, and 932, providing an effective date. So reading the Resolution Number 934.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Clint Braswell, I'm chairman of the Satellite Beach Recreation Department. I think everybody knows Kerry, the director. You have a copy of the resolution, I understand, as well as a kind of a summary of what the changes were. So if I may, I'll go through, if you want to turn to the resolution on page five, that's where the first change starts.
Right, we submitted a revised, could you explain that, Kerry?
Today, I believe, you all got a revised resolution, and Recreation Board at their last meeting had hoped to have a joint meeting between city staff and Satellite High School administration to discuss the possibility, or at least where we are with the city sharing and for administration from the satellite church. So since we were hoping to have that meeting soon, we took out the two portions in the resolution that you got earlier that spoke to charter Satellite High School players for soccer and Satellite High School players who play tennis at our facilities. So we spoke those, so the revised resolution today that you got this afternoon, this morning, did not include the two fee structures for Satellite High School players that you study in facilities. We will look at that again after we have a meeting with the state.
Okay? All right, good. So, page five, the first change that we're recommending is for the ball fields, and it's for the one-time users of the ball fields. As you can see, with the current resolution, had a day rate of $12 and a night rate of $24. We're proposing increasing that to $24 and $35, corresponding, so day rate of $24 and night rate, night rate of $35. And again, this is for the one-time users. As I understand, there aren't really a lot of one-time users of this, are there, yet? So, any questions on that? Okay. Section 12, for the tennis courts, we're kind of simplifying a little bit here, eliminating the junior category to where we're just going to have a resident and a non-resident fee. Yes.
Where you had junior before, and you're eliminating that, how many kids play? Is that going to be something you feel could affect them?
Generally speaking, we'll have very few kids coming in and just paying a dollar. Most of them are in classes or in leagues or something where they pay a league fee or a class fee before they even go out there.
Okay, thank you.
So we're proposing the resident fee, day fee from $150 to $225, and a non-resident fee from $250 to $325. We're also eliminating the different rate structure for nighttime playing. So it's going to be a rate whether you're playing in the daytime or the nighttime. All right, as far as memberships go, we're eliminating the couples, there was a couples category, had very few people kind of taking advantage of that, so we're going to, we're proposing to go with the, just a resident family, non-resident family, and then a resident individual and a non-resident individual. And for each of those, there's a semi-annual rate and an annual rate. Some of the rates you'll see actually went down, some of them went up. We're trying to kind of come up with some consistency here. We're really, the annual rate is just twice the semi-annual rate. We found that there was really no need to have a discounted annual rate. Any questions on that? All right. The racquetball fees, Section 15 at the bottom of page five, we're proposing to do away with the nighttime fee and just have a resident and a non-resident. It's going, proposing to go from $1.60 an hour to $2.25 an hour for resident, and from $2 an hour to $3.25 an hour for non-resident. The next change is on page six, under Section 18. We're proposed to decrease the rate for the skate park. Currently, it was $3, it's $3.50 a session, we're proposing to decrease that to $2 a session. And the punch card currently is 10 skates for $25, and we're proposing to change that to 20 skates for $25. The idea is to really, to get more use out of this facility. The next change is just, is under Section The next change is just, is under section nineteen, we're just proposing to eliminate the separate, the discounted fee for nonprofits. The rationale there is that I think that we get a lot of people where, you know, anytime they're having a group, someone in the group is part of some nonprofit somewhere, you know, it's not like we're trying to do anything against the nonprofits, it's just, you know, organizing that and administering that is a little cumbersome at times. No questions, page seven? Just under section twenty-four, proposing a slight increase in the gymnasium fee from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty a day. And then the last proposed change is page eight, section twenty-six, where we're proposing a, currently, there is, is there no daily use fee now?
No, the resolution says no fee for use of the game.
That's what it does. So still no charge during the school year, but for the summer programs, charging a dollar twenty, a dollar twenty-five per day, or thirty dollars for the summer program per child. To help cover the costs to put in the programs together.
Clint, I forgot, when we were at the rec board meeting, what did we, is the BMX bikes going to, is it the two dollar, same fee as skaters?
Don't follow the same.
Don't follow, okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify it, because we had the bikes here.
Clint, I read your letter, and that's what got me thinking with Kerry, I called her up concerning the other fees in there for the, with the high school.
Right, exactly.
I'd love to see us work closer with the high school. I'd love to see the football team be able to have a home, a field.
Yes.
And there's a field there, and it would save us the ability to have to spend thirty or forty thousand dollars to get one of these fields here ready. We've always been good partners with them, and I sure would like to see something worked out. We sure have always given them fields, tennis courts, whatever they've needed to do their programs. So I'd kind of like to just see the balance got there, because there is, Kerry and I talked about this, there's some history there. The reason we have the forty-some acres is because we approached them first to build a facility like Holland at their school years ago, and it didn't really work out. So I'd really like to see something worked out where, you know, it helps everybody, because we've always supported the football and all the sports, and if we don't have to spend thirty or forty grand, and we're helping them with tennis courts and soccer, you know, I'm sure we can work something out.
Yeah, exactly.
I volunteered you to, I mean, I think we should, we need to sit down, Mark.
Well, that's part of the reason I asked earlier, that we had that meeting. And we had, that's why I want to have a meeting with the principal before the schools start. We have to start, you know, working together on a lot of this stuff, because it just, you know, it doesn't really pay to have to build another football field when we have one here.
Right, and I think I'm going to attest to this, at the last rec board meeting, we did discuss some, some pretty good arguments. I think we could put together a little bullet list of why it really makes sense for them as well as us, and for the league as well. I definitely think that's the right approach.
Thank you. Further questions?
Yeah, I have some comments. I also had the same question about the BMX, but you answered that question. And also, I share the mayor's sentiment regarding the high school. I'm glad that they're going back and talking to him, because I had everything highlighted and underlined, and I had some serious concerns about that. And just in a nutshell, though, Kerry, I see some things eliminated, I see some things have dropped, and I see some things have increased. Is this going to increase the revenue for the Recreation Department, or is it just going to end up being a wash?
You know, just going down this list, ball fields won't make any difference, we have a great few one-time users, really, ever. The tennis courts will bring in additional money, memberships, and daily use, rap ball, you're not going to see any difference with most of the people that play here, and really getting in with like sixteen guys in the league. To me, part of it's going to be a wash, because I'm going to have two kids at two dollars, or I'm going to have six kids at three fifty, maybe fifty kids at two dollars, and twenty-five at three. The pavilions won't make any difference whatsoever. Gymnasium, see, it's slight increase, but not much. We have two nights of pickleball, night of volleyball, and two nights of basketball, that would each mean a dollar fifty, but not enough to make a big difference. Your big changes were in the earlier resolution, where you changed the fees for the clubhouse, and the citizens, those who are going to be reusing additional income. You'll see a little bit of that in my presentation.
I just want to make one other statement, and I think I've made this statement before. I think that recreation is a core service that this community wants and provides, and that's why we pay taxes, and so we really need to be sensitive about some of the fees that we're charging in lieu of our taxes on the community.
Just if I may add to that, just a little bit of the thought process when we go through this a little bit, is to just somewhat stay comparable and competitive to what other communities are under charge for these services. So that kind of comes into play.
And actually, I agree, I mean, for those who have been here a long time, there was a sign that hung in Percy Hedgecock's office for years, to put a ball in the kid's hand and take the brick out, and it always hung there, and, you know, recreation in our city has always been really important to the kids, and not taking away from the police department, but a great rec department helps here, police department, and, you know, the more kids we can get to the skate parks and do and all that, they're not on the streets, and it gives them something to do, and I like this, because, you know, I like the fees going down, so we can get more usage from it, and so hopefully it works.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I share your sentiments that you expressed, and I just wanted to ask you, in light of your comments, are you in agreement with this resolution as it's presented, or do you think it falls short of where we, where you would like to see us going with this?
I like it where it's at right now with the revised, and I really didn't have too much heartburn the way it was, I just wanted to make sure that we can be good neighbors and work good with the schools, and if there's ways to work out joint use of facilities that would save for both parties, I think we need to look at that.
But this resolution has taken those things out, so we're looking at this resolution as the revised resolution. So I'll make a motion to adopt the revised Resolution nine thirty-four.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Before we go to vote, I'll open this up to public comment. Here are no public comment, bring it back to counsel.
I'd just like to say thank you for all your efforts on this, I know you guys are working very hard on this, and it really shows, and just, we appreciate what you've done.
From going to the rec board meetings, you guys have worked on this for over a year.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this, and there's a lot of feelings, the same way that you have feelings, they've gone through all of this stuff, so thank you for all the time you guys put into it, and I will convey that to the board at our next meeting also.
Thank you. Any further counsel comments? Councilwoman McGott? Any further comment?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Councilwoman here?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes, five to nothing. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, ordinance number ten seventy-three, regarding site plan procedure. Jim?
Ordinance number ten seventy-three, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Article Two, Division Four, regarding the duties of the Beautification Board as it relates to its review of landscaping and irrigation plans, amending Article Three, Division One, of Chapter Thirty, Satellite Beach Code, regarding procedures for review of site plans, amending exceptions to process, providing limited exceptions for minor modification of approved site plans, providing parameters for minor modifications, providing authority to building official to grant administrative deviations for modifications to site plans, providing parameters to building official upon which deviations can be granted, amending Article Four, zoning with regard to community redevelopment agencies' authority to review architectural elevations of facades, exterior changes to structures, and colors of roof materials, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance number ten seventy-three.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number ten seventy-three on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from counsel?
Yeah, I do, I do have some questions. I was not here when the first ordinance was read, and I really, I just can't seem to keep track of the ordinance, because it doesn't have anything to show what was deleted or what was amended, and so I had a real hard time following this document.
The first reading, I believe, had the strike through zone.
Yeah, of course, it had.
Well, I would just, next time, if you don't mind having the strike throughs in here, because I just, I couldn't, I just couldn't follow, and I would, you know, in order to do this, I would have to go on back, so it was really hard for me to pick up this agenda package and figure out what was added and what was deleted. We can do that. Okay.
Councilwoman Dean, do you have any further questions on it? Okay, any further questions from counsel? Here are none, I'll open this up, agenda item number eleven for public comment. Here are none, back to counsel. Counsel comments?
No sir.
Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott?
Yes.
Yes.
Senator Barron?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Agenda item number twelve, accept the proposed budget for FY thirteen fourteen.
Courtney?
Our staff has provided counsel with the written copies of the proposed budget. The proposed budget is now online, we put it on the homepage, and also under the Finance Department, and under your council meeting section, so there should be no trouble in finding the proposed budget. The proposed budget has a number of new items in it, it looks a lot different, there's a lot more text in the, in the budget trying to explain it, there's a section on reserves, there's a section on debt, and there's the capital improvement program, and those are items that we have not had in our budget prior to now. And I know a lot of you have been waiting on a couple of those items, so you do have two weeks to review, please call me with questions, I'll be available that whole time, obviously, to, for any questions you have. We will be presenting this in entirety on the thirty-first, at your special meeting, so you'll see a PowerPoint presentation going through the budget, and then we will be also at that meeting setting your tentative millage rate, and then also setting your public hearings, so basically, all of your trim items will be done on that evening. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, and we, also, your proposed budget is slightly lower millage rate than we have now. Certainly, you have the ability to set a higher millage rate at your tentative, your tentative millage rate higher, in case you want to add things in that we don't have in the budget, but we'll be glad to go through that with you at the, at your special meeting.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
Just one, no increase in any assessment, stormwater, anything like that?
Our staff was not proposing any increases in the stormwater assessments, so at your next meeting, you'll be creating that assessment, passing the, at the latest by resolution. So, but we were not proposing an increase in the stormwater.
So you want a motion to accept what we have?
Accept.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from city council? Here are none, open up for public comments. Okay, bring it back to counsel. Counsel? Okay, Lenore? Hold the counsel, please.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Senator Barron?
Yes.
Senator Tina?
Yes. Thank, first off, to the staff and all employees, I came by here on a Saturday, Sunday, and they were here, working all hours, we threw Andy in the fire when he first got here, and thank you very, very much. I think you'll find that this is really, really nice, and thank you for the hard work.
One thing I did want to do is, is provide a big, huge thank you to Councilwoman McGott for helping us at it. She stayed up a number of nights, very late, helping us do this, so. I know Andy and Christina, our budget team, was here very, very late, and all weekend as well as I was, but Councilwoman McGott could actually say the same thing, so we really appreciate your work, Councilwoman McGott, thank you.
Councilwoman McGott, thank you, on behalf of the council, thank you, and the city, thank you very, very much. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, proposed, the meeting for July thirty-first.
I did want to note that we were trying to get your vacation ordinance on this meeting, but I recommended a change to include the vacation process, right away vacation is what we're talking about, in the, in the land development regulations, which in that case required it to go to PZAB, so that's where it's going now. So we had to postpone that until the seventh, so you'll see that ordinance in its entirety on the seventh for first reading. The other items are your conference of plan, and then your stormwater assessment will be on that meeting as well.
Question? We're going through this, seven o'clock start? How long do you think this is going to take? Do we need a six-thirty start? I know you're.
I can come earlier.
I would just want to make sure where.
For your, the special meeting is on the thirty-first, though.
Right, the special meeting, but we have a seven o'clock start time?
Yes.
I mean, is, what do you feel?
We would love to start at six, because it might take some, take some time to get through it. There's a lot of new features in the budget that weren't there before, so we would like to highlight those and get your comments.
Is six o'clock makeable by everyone? Because I know in the past ones, they were on, we really want to go through this. Any further comments from counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, are you saying that the meeting on the thirty-first will start at six?
Yes. Before I open up for public, any further counsel? Any public comment?
Dale Abrams, citizen, are we going to do line by line? I'm looking forward to this, line by line.
Our city manager is going to present this on the thirty-first.
So the public can see everything that's going on.
I said the city manager will present the budget on the thirty-first.
But we won't be doing line by line.
That's, I don't believe she will be.
Oh, Courtney, we had so much fun doing it in the past.
But if you, if any citizens want to come in and talk to me about the budget, please call, I mean, we will be glad to.
But you're so busy, do you have time to talk to citizens? I mean, if we do it at a meeting, you know, we can go over the whole thing with your PowerPoint presentation.
I will have a PowerPoint presentation, but I think it would be somewhat impossible to go through the whole budget line by line.
We've done it in the past.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Here are none, bring it back to counsel. Any further agenda items for that meeting this evening? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number, let me just see, the August seventh meeting, let's look at that real quick, got everything?
Right, that was, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun on that, but it should be, it's going to be, it's going to look like a small agenda, but there's a lot on the agenda in terms of discussion, so.
Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, before you start on item fourteen, on the minutes, I have several questions on both of those sets of minutes, that I haven't had the opportunity to discuss with the city clerk. I would ask the council to postpone consideration of these minutes until our next regular meeting.
Okay. Is that so you can review them better?
Did you say something to me?
Yes, ma'am. Is that so you can review these minutes better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel wishes?
That's fine.
We need a motion, or just a consensus? Okay, no action. Okay. Here are, any other further business before counsel?
No, sir.
Here are none, meetings adjourned.
In this, though?
Really, yes. Really.